Good evening, folks. What's going on? Hello, hello. What's up, Manic? What's up, RV Winkle? What's up, Lee Retro Spazo? All of you with the green names. That's not gonna be confusing. In the least. Hi, everybody. Happy Wednesday! I hope you're doing well. I'm doing good. You know, quite good. Better than last night. Things went much more smoothly today than yesterday. Things in the evening went much more smoothly. I didn't have to come directly from voiceover recordings to the stream. I had a whole hour, an entire hour, to myself, before I had to flip gears around. What's up, Fury? Good to see you. Someone else with a green name in chat. Why are there so many green names in chat? Let me use a slightly different green. Alright, I respect that. It didn't change it. I see it. You're like a Kermit the Frog green now. Now it did? Yeah. I mean, look, Twitch chat sometimes forgets about your badges. It forgets about your colors. Green is your favorite color. Can't speak for others. Green is a very good color. I'm not even that partial to yellow or golden tones, but gotta stay consistent with the branding, I suppose. Hello, Ar Dominik. Good to see you. And Libraryman, good to see you as well. No need to stinkin' badges. At least now we finally get some color variance here. Green is also my favorite color. Most of my wardrobe is shades... Really? No kidding? I don't think I actually have any green shirts. I have a lot of colorful shirts. Well, I have a lot of white. I have a lot of black. I have a fair number of gray. I've got two yellow ones, a couple blue ones, a brown one. Yeah, no green. I have an orange one. Just talking about your shirts all stream. We could do it, too. We could absolutely do it. Had a great green shirt, but the moths liked it, too. Aw, Manic, that's tragic. Is City Skylines about capitalism? It doesn't have to be. It does not have to be. Not the reason I was inspired to do this tonight, but Ambiguous Amphibian has done a number of challenged cities in this, and one of them was Zero Tax City, which was very interesting and honestly really, really funny. Fashion show at lunch. A bunch of bright-colored shirts when I ride your bike. Ooh, nice. Jelsey, that shit I did in Seven Days. Oh, I didn't know. I'm sure it was hilarious. You can't go back on funding. You'll regret this. Did McConnell have a stroke on live TV today? I hope so. Or worse. Yeah, something ain't right in that old man, and not just his views. But yeah, it's been an exciting day for a lot of reasons, not just that. So, demolition on our yard started today. Crew came out around like 10:30 in the morning and broke up all the flower beds. And they were gonna do the walkways and stuff, too, but they hit our water line. They accidentally dug up our water line and had to spend the rest of the afternoon fixing it. So that was a tense couple of hours right there. Oh, yeah, no, I did see that. Yeah, that was cute. Hey, hey, hey! Guess there's a new place to live. Congratulations, Dread. That's gotta be a big relief. And didn't you just start looking, too? Hell, yeah. Very, very nice. But yeah, so we were without water for a couple hours today. Had a bunch of plants delivered. They're in the breezeway next to my house. Voiceover recordings went fine. That's all good. So yeah, not quite as stressful as yesterday. And like I said, I had a full hour before I had to settle in for the stream tonight, so yeah. Yep, congratulations, Dread. That's gotta be a huge load off, honestly. Your favorite city simulator game? Oh, you're really gonna enjoy tonight, then. Don't worry, I'm gonna get to the explanation of tonight very shortly, because it's kind of a time-based thing, and I wanna give you all plenty of time to do the thing. Sorry, Prey replay in the mystery playing Sister Shock 1 for that video. Holy shit. I love Prey already. It's favorite modern insim. Holy shit, it's like 200 times better. It's one of my all-time favorite games. I feel like Prey gets better every time you play it. Like, I loved it the first time I played it, and then when I streamed it, oh god. I was just having the best time. And then I did Moon Crash on top of that. Oh. Wonderful. A wonderful, wonderful experience. We can talk about all that, that and other things, but I'm gonna go ahead and get into it, because there is some stuff that we're gonna do tonight. Head top out of horror last night. Too much horror. IRL, my brain was all run away. Oh, well, shouldn't have worried about that, Libraryman. There wasn't a whole lot of horror in Chasing Static or, you know, story or like anything, as it turns out. Prey is excellent, so very well-designed with such deliberate care. It really is, yeah. I'm shitting on the bathroom. The guts zero-gravity section is a little dull. It's literally the only time I think the game does anything bad. I do like... It feels appropriate to me. I can see where that would drag for a bit, and it is a pretty big shift in game style. I just like the feel of it. I just think it's really neat to be in this big utility shaft and all the weird sort of encounters you have there. Didn't miss much? No. Oh, god, no. You missed a big rant by me at the end about everything that game did wrong. South-facing room with AC and roomies messy. Nice, that's very promising. Very, very promising. The guts space itself could have been a little better. Yeah, I think maybe space dragged a bit for me. Remind me of those dialogue-heavy games that are shot on video. Wasn't even that. An odd if random time for a hip-hop beat up behind it. Just watching Venom. I love that stupid movie. I should watch Venom, actually. I've heard good things about it. Good in a stupid way. Okay, so anyway, real quick, reminders for this week. We are voting. We're voting on what our next big game should be, starting this Monday, less than a week. It's less than a week away. So, we have eight options. Eight. That's a lot of options. Vote for as many of them as you want. Just, you know, one vote per option. If you've already voted, don't worry about it. If you have yet to vote, well, I suggest you get on that and make it happen. Was this as acidic as the D rant? No, it was me trying to be constructive. I... yeah. It was one of those games where I felt a little bad disliking it as much as I did, but its flaws really can't be glossed over. Venom 2 is the best gay comedy ever? Ooh, nice. So yeah, voting's happening. You have until the end of Saturday night's stream to vote. Tomorrow night, we're going back to King Arthur's World as part of our Power Hours special on that game. Hopefully, we'll accomplish a lot more in that and keep on chugging there. Friday, you know what? I'm gonna go ahead and say let's do the GBA night. Let's go ahead and do it. Y'all requested five games for us to look at, which are... Where'd you go? Hem-Taro, Ham-Ham Heartbreak, Kurururururin, Mother 3, E.T. Extraterrestrial, and the Barbie Spy Game, whatever it's called. So of course, we'll do those. And if we have time, maybe we'll do some other stuff. More Barbie games. And that will be the plan for that. When do we go to Narnia? Whenever you find it in your heart. Win Commander 1, the Mac version is like a weird thing. Really? No kidding. Should I get my sister on Underworld Ascendant? I'm fucking evil. Got a new XP-flavored Coke on Triton now. How's it taste? Underworld Ascendant is considered the worst immersive sim like Thief 2014 exists, so I'm really looking forward to actually playing Thief 2014 in the hopefully nearest future. I wanna see if that game is actually as bad as people say, because I have other people telling me that it's not. Everything Ascendant is pretty awful. Those you votes? Odd if random indulges in megalomania via city management? Actually, no. Let's go ahead and talk about the concept for tonight, and then we will get started. Welcome to City Council Night, everybody. Who's the city council? You are. Here's the plan for tonight. I have a new Dragon Coin thing. It is cheap. It is very cheap, and it's simply called "Call a Vote." And the way we're gonna do this is that I'm going to start playing City Skylines, and I'm gonna do my thing. I'm just gonna do my thing that I wanna do. However, whenever one of you has a smokin' hot idea for something you want me to do in the game, whether it's as benign as like rename something or like build some huge sprawling complex thing, you can avail yourself of this option, and we will put it to a vote. We will put it to a vote in chat. And if your resolution passes, I will do it. And if it doesn't pass, I won't. And that's it. That's the short version of it. The only other rules beyond that is it's gonna be on a five-minute timer to actually give us a chance to run votes and stuff. Why is that active? I don't know, but I'm leaving it. The existential horror of like expanding city sprawl under the leadership of just a goofy moron? I don't know. So yeah, it's gonna be on a five-minute timer, so we have time to put things to votes. It has to be focused on things in the game. Like, you can't put me doing the Macarena to a vote or something. And subsequent votes will always take priority. So... Only vote thing I said... Well, I haven't turned it on yet, or otherwise somebody would have already done it. Come on, Lojo High. I know how this community works. I would have had like three votes proposed in the time it took me to like explain all this shit. XP Coke is apple-flavored? Oh, can't you? Yes, you can't. I mean, you can try, but I won't honor it, so... So yeah, if somebody votes to lower taxes to zero, and that passes, and then the next person runs a vote to push taxes to like 25%, and that passes, then the new vote overrides the old vote, so... It's the only way to prevent total chaos. So anyway, with that said, I'm gonna turn it on, and I'm gonna start playing. And as these roll in, Dominic... Let me see here. Who are my mods right now? Dominic and Arcane, if y'all don't mind helping out, if you're around, if you wouldn't mind running the actual votes when one of these gets put in, I would appreciate it. They just need to be yay-nay votes on things. Defund the police. I'll second that. What are the commands I need to do? I'm not sure what you're on, but there is a... Like, on my interface, I have a manage poll command. And if you click that, it'll pop up a thing. Oh, god, the last poll was gross. Who the hell put that in? And you can just do new poll. Or Dominic there has the command. It's slash poll. I'm not sure what you're on. So anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up. I'm sure somebody's gonna put one in immediately. But there it is. It's very cheap, so that y'all can use it. And then I am gonna start a new game. Oh, also, I'll give you... I have to believe that Manic already had that typed in and just like cut it so that he just pasted it in there the second it went live. And if you don't mind, put the votes on a three-minute cycle. I think three minutes should be sufficient, because that will prevent them from overlapping if people are like really, 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 really all over this. Well, good. While this is happening, I can give you a little bit of context. Originally, I came up with this concept months ago, and I wanted to do it with SimCity 4, because I love SimCity 4. SimCity 4 is a big game for me. The whole SimCity franchise, save the most recent one that died in ignoble death... depth? Death? Were very important games for me and some of my all-time favorites, and SimCity 4 was like chief among them. So, yeah, I wanted to do this with SimCity 4. There were two problems with that. One is that... Well, there was like one problem with it, and then like a benefit to doing it with City Skylines. One is that Sims 4 is kind of ornery to get running these days. I have it all patched up and things, and it runs, but it also really hates being alt-tabbed. So if I needed to manage any poll stuff myself, it would not be happy about that. So, but at the same time, I've owned City Skylines for a long time, and I've only played a couple hours of it. I've never gotten very far in this game. I've never... With DLC, you have sort of cities. Nothing. I have absolutely nothing. I only have the base game. Also... Yeah, really. Arcane, if you're having trouble, I'll go ahead and run this first vote. There's a lot of fixes in the DLC. I can't imagine we'll run into any game-breaking stuff in just like three hours of gameplay tonight. I'm not real worried about that. There we go. Can you vote that if they don't have the vote up before the cooldown timer expires, it automatically passes? Uh, no. No, because that could let some really potentially unfortunate things through. So no, we need to run votes for all of these things. So yeah, I figured since I don't have a whole lot of experience in City Skylines, it might be more fun to do this with this game, especially since City Skylines also has like a progressive unlock system for the stuff you can do. So it'll help make clear to everyone as we're playing what we can actually do and what kind of stuff we'll be capable of at different junctures. For what's a VOD tomorrow? What did you think of Hand of Doom? I loved it. I thought it was great. Alright, that was great. Sad you're on the resort DLC is really good. These days, unless I'm sure I'm gonna be really, really into the game, I don't buy the DLC until I play the base game and know that I'm actually gonna enjoy it and like spend a bunch of time in it, and I've just... I've never... There have been like two points where I've sat down with this game, and I've tried to get into it and just didn't for whatever reason, and they weren't recent, so I can't really say what it was. Imagine just get City Skylines had Twitch integration? That would be pretty amazing. Glad it didn't fall apart at the end? Yeah. So let's see. I'm gonna do... What am I gonna do? Foggy Hills. That sounds like Silent Hill. And River, Green Plains, Lagoon Shore. Let's see, if this town is to be named Fart Parlor, I think Foggy Hills is probably what we wanna call it. Probably where we wanna build it. I understand that they're launching City Skylines 2 next month, so there's no reason to bother you. Yes, I am very interested in checking out City Skylines 2. I might probably want to do it right away, but we'll see. Watched all the friendly neighborhood, and it looks absolutely fantastic. Yeah, it does. I think Eva has been playing a bit of it. Or no, I think Eva might have played through all of it and said it was really, really good, so... Okay, I'm pretty sure this one passes, so... I've seen enough chat. This vote goes for Fart Parlor. Let's go ahead and get started. Friendly Neighborhood is awesome. I might actually play it. I don't think I even made it to a point where I was like doing anything with raw materials in this. So anyway, the proposed vote comes back every five minutes, so keep an eye on your Dragon Coin stuff if you want to propose something else. And just as a courtesy, just as a courtesy, if you propose the last vote, give folks, give other folks a chance to propose the next one. Here's zone that Empathy makes friends with all the monsters. Uh, yeah, 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 yeah. Build things. Okay. So let's see. How do I do this? I think we build roads. How does one build... Oh. That's such a fun sound effect. Alright, well, I'm gonna build a road out to like here. Okay. And then it feels like people are gonna need a way out of here, too, so... There we go. Okay, we have roads. Now we need zoons. Should I make this a heavily industrialized place? Ooh, okay. Also, can I just mention how funny it is that they totally have like an off-brand Twitter bird now? Chirper. That is a vote. Yes, Arcane. Anything that says redeemed, call a vote. You can put that to a vote. It's really good. You're really good. Alright, chirper. Alright, well, let's build some more roads, because we got... Look at this lovely coastline we have. Let's go build some stuff over here. Okay, so we can make a bridge. I can just build this weird direction. Let's make this place a hell's game! Excellent. Alright, I'm gonna build like that. Here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna... That's... Can I just like... What's going on with that? Why does it wanna... Oh, because, okay, this. Is this what I want? Maybe not. Okay, that's a really weird way to do it. I guess we'll do it this way. Let's zone that in. Hell, I'm gonna go buy the puppet game. Nice. Hmm, I wonder if I should... Maybe... Oh, that's what the... Ah, that's what the dots are for. Okay. Okay, 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 okay. That's what the dots are for. Dirt roads, nobody around, you still can't do it, right? Look, I never said I was good at these games, okay? I know, the space is... The space already occupied. Sorry, I know I'm starting with boring grids. I just need to figure out how all this works. There we go. Alright, let's zone in some of this stuff. And then, let's put some... Put some commerce over here. Wha- what's going on in the vote? Looking like a no! Looking like this motion might fail! D-zone. Let's see, let's put... Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna put the industry over here. I'm sure that'll be great. Fart Harbor requires more green space to clear the farts. Roads just spell ass, it's Fart Harbor after all. I mean, that's, that's a proposal that can go through. Oh, and then I think I have to let the game do things. Why isn't that? I think I right-clicked that. And then they're gonna need power, right? What is this? That's a coal power plant. Well, since, since the industrialization resolution failed, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this a, a clean place. Let's build these like... I don't know, build these like over here or something. I have no idea how many of these I'm gonna need. I guess we could start with one and then figure it out from there, huh? There we go. That should help. Okay, so we're producing three megawatts, we're currently not consuming any. Ooh, here we go, look at that! Endless expansive, nothing is much better than what we played last night. Need fifty and put them in the residential zone? Look at this! Little houses with no water. Yeah, I guess that might be kind of disappointing, mightn't it? Let's see, water pumping station, pumps water to the city from body of water. Place of pumping stations taking fresh water. Know that water pumping station always requires a water drain pipe to work properly. Drain pipe pumps, oh, this is the thing that makes poop water, isn't it? Hmm 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 hmm, okay. So I'm guessing we shouldn't put the, okay, and this is the flow of the river. So I guess we shouldn't put the poop water, we shouldn't put the poop water upstream of the freshwater, is what I'm hearing here. Let's put this here. And let's put this... It's probably like really far away, but... Waterway downstream, yeah, I had a, I had a feeling that might be the case. Alright. The system works. And then, I think it just needs power now. Probably gonna be a while before this all gets plugged together, so. Um... You also need power. Wow, you're way out there. Hey, how much money do I have anyway? Haven't been paying any attention to that. The bridge nowhere is a boondoggle corruption to the highest level. What's up, Grumpfire? What's up, Helvee? Remember I made videos of sewage powered dams when this came out? Is it working? Do, do we have any poop yet? I don't see any poop yet. Are you working? It is not operating. Okay, well, is, is the water thing operating? This is operating nor, well, as long as this is operating normally, I don't give a shit. Thirty-nine thousand pounds? Ah, yes, our money. Well, thirty-eight thousand now, because we are constantly losing money. Alright. How are these people doing? It's the Sycamore Residence. You can rename districts, buildings, cars, citizens, and other objects by clicking on their name and the relevant... So you can rename like everything in this? Constantly losing money sounds about right for Audishco, yeah. Irony, your building doesn't give a shit, neither do you. Okay, everything seems to be working. I guess. According to that, it is. Infrastructure is important and asteroid might help improve the sense of civic duty among citizens. Okay, that's a pretty overwhelming vote in favor, so I guess, I guess we should go ahead and start getting, uh, to work on this. Twork, to work. This, uh, info view, I don't need info, I know what's going on in my city. So can we co-op? I don't think we can co-op any of this for the ass. I think we're gonna need a new section here. Let's start it from here. Let's see, how, how can we do this? Yeah, I don't need, thanks. Thanks, but no thanks. If I say I want a straight road, that means, well, whatever. Um, okay. And then, we'll cross this here. There's the A. Alright, and then... Free form might be... Boy, this is gonna be ugly soon. Let's see how this goes. Maybe? Oh my lord, okay. Well, this is all pretty exciting. There we go. Okay, now we just need... Let's see, I guess we'll start you like around here. There we go. We got it, chat. Should do an incursive to be special? I think this is already pretty special, honestly. You not make any zone, building historical. Objective complete. Alright, uh, we need a lot more people, I think. Actually, no, according to this, we need a lot more industry. These people want some dirty ass places to live, to work. Alright, gimme that. Let's just make a, let's just do that. Where's the super S district? What do you think, Sarah? How do, how do you think I did here? Put a park or something at the top of the A? Proposals? We got, we gotta put this to a vote, chat. Um, here, have just like all the industry you want. Build, just have a ton of industry, it's fine. Uh, and I think they want more power. Yes, I think they want more power. So here, let's do... There we go. Alright, I say let's go ahead and start filling in, let's fill in the, the middle. Oh no, you know what? Ooh, I have an idea. I have a thought. Okay. I've had thoughts. I've thought things, chat. Wow, this is really ugly. I love it. These some, like, this is a smart, smart fill tool they have here. Alright, all of that's gonna be residential. Alright, I'm sure we're gonna need to get power to places. Well, no, wait, I can, I can do something about that too. I can, I can get things to build like into that weirdly direction. There we go, let's do that. So I played through Stalker Oblivion Loss area full AK and I haven't left the cordon yet. So what does Oblivion Loss do to the game? How does, how does that change things? Alright, um... We need to lay some pipe in the ass. Look, chat, I'm just being real with you, okay? I'm just, I mean, look. I've got, I've got a job to do, okay? Adds more enemies or weapons adds emissions to the game, okay? Oh, the streets are all named. Ashland Lewis Street, Reed Street. Uh, Reed, oh, wow, this is Reed Street. Wow, Reed Street's a really weird place, and the, the second S is the Todd, is Todd Harris Street. I enjoy being the agent of chaos with the stream, feels nice. Alright, so how are we doing? Alright, industry, oh yeah, you need pipes. It does make sense that you would need pipes. I guess we can zone some more industry. Where should I, should I like bisect this road somewhere? How about right here? And then we'll fill this in, over here. Perfect. You tweak the bottom of the two S's so it looks more like a... I mean, we have a, we have a nice little cleft here, I think. Missions are deadly to the player and humans if you aren't in a place considered inside and are part of the and are part of the lore they didn't implement in the first game. I see, okay. Alright, let's speed this up a bit. Should be Peach Street. Speed this up a lot, in fact. Now people, now people wanna move in. Oh, I see foundations going up. Yeah, here we go. Everybody wants to live in that ass. Note, I have no idea if nature options are in the game, so that's probably something that we don't actually have access to at the moment. Um... In fact, yeah, I, at present, I only have access to roads, zones, electricity, and water. So I would, I would ask that you keep your requests, uh, within the realm of our current capabilities. How's that vote going anywhere? Alright, well, that's okay. We'll put that one aside for when we do have those capabilities. But yeah, going, going forward, let's try to keep it to what we can do. Would ask that you keep your requests. Chat, we're in the green! Chat, we're making money! Fart Parlor is now making money. This is very exciting. I'm very excited. I wonder how hard it is to turn on to Todd Harris Street? This is a very pretty game, too. Need to think carefully about what kind of tramp stamp will go at the top of the A. That ass is so ugly, no offense. Oh, none taken. I mean, they, they, they can't all be bangers. Should I just have to, uh, have me try and get a vote going for the elementary school cool S or your school? So just so you know, just, just so everybody's on the same page, for those of you that haven't seen this game before, uh, there's an unlock system. Currently, our city is a little hamlet. Uh, when we reach a population of four hundred and forty, that will unlock new features like taxes and garbage. We'll be able to build landfills and elementary schools and medical clinics. And every time, every time you reach new population milestones, it'll unlock new stuff that you can do. Uh, when we hit Worthy Village, for example, uh, we can specialize our industry, we can build, uh, fire and police departments. We can have districts. Great, I gotta walk my dog, okay. Alright, well, things are good right now. Things are proceeding apace. In fact, I'm gonna speed up the apace. Let me see, even more money in here. Oh, there goes, there goes the poop. We are expelling the poop. And this side of town already looks kinda like a hellhole, so... Great, it's going great, chat. We're actually making a lot of money now. And lots of people wanna live here. So I suppose we should fill in some more of the ass. Um, I'm gonna save that for commercial zones. All this can be residential. School system looking like this is possible? School system looking like that. I thi, okay, okay, I think, I think I have something we can do with that. I think I have a thought. The top of the A doesn't have full water access? You're right, it doesn't, thank you. Good call. Just make sure that's all set. Would not wanna have a dry ass. That is just the worst. Music is a little intense? It's meant to be inspiring. It's meant to, meant, meant to have some soar to it. A soaring ass. Okay. Always vote for the cool ass. Uh, need more power. Uh, we are getting the people close to these. Have to be careful. Hey, we did it! We, we made Little Hamlet! Huzzah! Little Hamlet, that's us. The mayor is doing well, leading the city. New citizens and business keep flying, uh, keep moving in. Hashtag flying colors. Alright. Edumacations. Alright. So we want an ele- elementary school. Alright, let me think about this. How can we... Last I knew him, Horatio. Alright, let me, let me refresh myself on how exactly the cool S works. Okay. I'm thinking... We'll have to, we'll have to lay down the roads first. Hopefully I can do this without completely screwing it up. Um... Yeah, I wanna go from here. Ah, you know what? I don't know if that's gonna work. We may have to do it this way. To actually get a functional cool S. Let me see, let's see. Okay, that act- Okay, that actually kinda works. Okay, hang on, I got an idea, I got an idea, I got an idea. Okay, that actually kinda works. Okay, hang on, I got an idea, I got an idea, I got an idea. This is gonna be a little complicated, but I think we can make this work. Alright, I think that's right, right? Yes, okay, that's right, that's right. Alright, so then we need... Oh, that inside area is gonna be a real... Tight spot. Really, really, really wants to go one of these ways. Is this actually, I just realized, this isn't even gonna connect right? Aha, we'll do that, okay. That'll work. We'll just connect it from the sides here because that makes so much sense. Perfect. Okay. Okay, I think I did it. Chat, I have no idea what you've been saying in the interim. Cool S could have been an overpass from hell, too? We're literally doing an art stream but stealthy? The inner road is connected to nowhere. You're right, the inner road is connected to nowhere. Oh boy. Okay. Well, I guess we will have to just connect this one up like this, then. So the two sides of the cool S don't actually touch. There's something very poetic about that, I think. Um, alright, as far as the school goes... This was probably the least efficient way to do this. This was probably the absolute least efficient way to do this. So bravo, chat. I'm very impressed. Sass. Anyway, let's zone some more residences here. Uh, you know what? Not, no, 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 no. We don't, I don't want, no. No, 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 no. Alright, we can have one store there, that's fine, as a treat. You know what, actually, sure, why not? There you go. Enjoy. Shit, Tori's beaming the joy, glad I could help. Glad I could help. Awkward. Isn't that a what? No cops? I don't think that's gonna be a difficult one to pass. Tell that to Ice Cube. Is there superhero option? Um, almost certainly not in the base game. Yeah, I don't think you're gonna find anything like that in here at the moment. Alright, I'm gonna fill in... This, and then, are we gonna need water? We are, the cool S is gonna need some water. To stay cool, I guess, and I might as well just... Hook the rest of this area up, I think. Man, I am so bad at thi- look at this shit! You know, okay, I'll just, I'll fill in this part and then we'll just do some dumb little, just like... Here. There you go. A little extra water main. Remember the poll filled by not having to be fuck the police? Fuck the police? Yay or nay? Um, we need some more filthy disgusting industry. So, I mean, let's just build this up. Let's just make this a horrible part of the city. You place trees wherever you like. Uh, currently, no. Currently, I do not have access to landscaping. I absolutely love the cool idea, I absolutely love the idea that the cool S is actually a viable area. I just love that these two parts don't connect. That you're gonna have like the school and these houses. I should zone these as totally different things, honestly. Like, I should zone this side of the cool S as industry, and this side as like residences. Alright, we actually need more commerce. So I'm gonna build a new commercial area right here in the middle of the neighborhood. This would be a nice little, like, main street-y area. Here in the intersection of Reed and Leighton. This is looking good, this is looking nice. Look at all these little peop- hang on. So they said I could click on people, right? Oh my god, you can click on people! This is Winston Cook. He is an uneducated adult. Wow, rude. Resides at the Valley Residence, operator at Ice Cube Factory, he's going to the General Store. Literally have one of those streets, uh, as a rich side of town. Welcome back, arcane. Yes, we have a cool S now. Tucked up under the ass. This entire city is gonna look like a middle schooler's notebook. Alright, we need more power, though. Going to the General Store ostensibly to buy some generals. Alright. No cops, no cops, understood. Chat, I might suggest, because right now we're getting a lot of demand for trash services. Your next provision may want to have something to do with trash. Otherwise, I'm just gonna plop one down in a reasonable human location. Ah, Main Street, time for decay in this town to die except for the Walmart and Dollar General on the outskirts. Uh, the elementary school is operating normally. 124 out of 300 students, nice. It's okay, Amazon will kill those students. Let's see. Everything presently is a fold-up, so... I'm gonna expand our horrible industrial park. Ah shit, I made that one too long. It's fine. That's fine. We'll just have a little strip of hell back here. But if Fart Harbor likes all that, what if? What if, chat? Maybe they do. I mean, they're still really happy about their lot in life somehow. Can't click on any of that. Uh, let's see. Happy! Residential happiness is not great, but commercial and industrial happiness, man, they're doing gangbusters. Look at all these happy filthy industries. Look at these happy little corner stores. Look at these miserable people living down by the coast. Are the residents of Far Parlor actually raccoons in trench coats? I suppose, I suppose it's possible. Stranger things have happened. Uh, we're getting some increase- is there a, hang on. Down below the ass is a dark smelly alley that doesn't seem to do much. Yeah! You could say that. Municipal healthcare is a standard in any other city of size except ours. When are we gonna get one? #21st century, #healthcare. Yep, remember to have a look at the newly unlocked surface. Alright, how much does it cost? How much does garbage cost? 4,000. Alright, fine. Here, we'll build it over here in this hellhole. There we go. #takingouteth trash. There we go, there we go. We have garbage on Hickory. So that's gonna get taken care of now. Uh, supposedly we need healthcare. I mean, this is America, so I'm, okay, that's expensive. Healthcare is too expensive, chat. Yes, I know, shut up, video game. I'm busy. I am busy providing for my people. Build this shit here, and here... And here, and here... And here, and here, and here, and here... And I guess all down here? Maybe? I don't know, we'll see what happens. I guess we can do the rest of the S, too. Road in the shape of a weenus. I need more taxpayers, chat, that's the deal. You know you want to erect that road? Um, I guess we could put some commerce... Let's do, let's do some commer- nah, let's not. I changed my mind. We'll do some commerce here. More neighborhood stores. And I guess we could do... Let's do a block of commerce here. We can put government buildings on it! Where are all the garbage trucks? Why is no one picking, yeah, why is nobody picking up your trash? Why is this happening? Well, you're only using 12 of your 15 trucks, like, get with it. Oh, I think it's, I think that chirp was from this one person right here? Who hadn't seen the literal army of trash trucks coming to pick up their garbage? This is garbage truck. This is also garbage truck. This is also garbage truck. Alright, road in the shape of weenus, ooh! Road in the shape of weenus is contentious. The Wengus Road is evenly split, the tension. The tension was thick. Turgid. What are these places that we're building, anyway? Pancakes International! I love it! The info window shows you shit. Yeah, I get it, thank you, video game. BBQ? Heat and Chill? Is that what it's called? Big Bite Restaurant? I think it's Big Bite right now. Hmmmm... Alright. Well, as the tiebreaker, as the tiebreaker... Uh, I shall exercise my civic right... Uh, to decide... And I think it's only fair, I think it would only be fair... Uh, in light of this, to do a very small one. A very, very small one. Perhaps on the other side of the ass. Chode Road? Yeah, flaccid. And then, let's see. Hmm, I feel like you really need to do two in parallel to get the effect. Well, there you go. Alright, that's not actually as small as I was envisioning, but you know what, it's fine. And then... They need pre-built roundabout sections. I don't, actually. Uh, we are now Worthy Village! As we work on our Dong Street. Uh, we have districts, policies, a second loan, district specialization, service policies, fire department, police, well, we don't need this. Unique buildings, industry specializations, power usage, water usage... Uh, stuff, lots of things. Cut the raw off the tip to make it look bigger. I'm trying to think, like, is there a way I could like... Free-form this? Can we just do, distance too short, yeah, I've heard that before. Oh, 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 I think we're getting, hang on, we're getting somewhere, chat! We're getting somewhere. Eh... Is there a way to kinda, you know what, that's fine. I'll accept that. There you go. There you go, chat. I can make it work. Alright, well, I know I made one person's day. Uh, do I have a traffic, surely I have a traffic overlay, right? I do. Okay, so the highest traffic here is, okay. Well, that makes this next part easy. Because we need to zone some more commerce. And I am just gonna give you this stretch here. Oh man, and they zoned that instantly! Anatomically correct town, the legend did put lives on. This is, uh, this is actually a continuation of Todd Harris Street. City Hall needs to be moved to. Uh, what do we have in terms of unique buildings? The Creator's Library. Plausible Transference, Countdown Clock. Okay, I don't actually have access to any of these yet. I'm sure there's gonna be civic buildings at some point, I'm not putting an elementary school there. Under absolutely no circumstances will I put an elementary school there. What's going on here? Not enough workers? Oh shit, we need more residences, chat. Well, let's see here. Alright, first things first, let's go ahead and... Nope, 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 wrong one, wrong one. Not commerce. We need this... This is a bit easier than doing it that way. Alright, are there any other obvious... Residential zones? I guess here. Um... I guess it might be time to start populating this area. Actually, once this grows in, actually, here. We'll do a little bit of commerce here. Just a little commerce as a treat. What's this? Open the Districts Tool to add and remove districts and industrial specializations from them. Specialized industries can take advantage of local natural resources. Uh, so I can, okay, I'm straight up, I have no idea how districts work. So, I'm not gonna worry about that too much. Alright, uh, let's populate the shaft for now. And make sure it's, um... Goddamn, there's a lot of jokes I could make right now. Like, just an immense number of jokes I could make. But I shall refrain. How's crime looking? Oh, see, you don't need cops? Not in a city this mature. But, fire hazards, whatever. You pay an area and it lets you fine-tune policies for that area base. Oh, okay, okay, okay. Um, I guess I could give people healthcare. That's a thought, I suppose. Now you're afraid, too late, chat. Not the first time someone said that to him. That's right, yeah, we'll put on the cool S. Yay! Look how happy everyone in the cool S and the ass are. Lovely. People definitely like this area. How must, how must it feel to live in a house like this? The Umer residents. I mean, just sandwiched between these two routes, like, right under the glands? Just, just tucked, tucked away, right here? This is quite an impressive view, chat. Quite an impressive view, I have to say. I predict this stream will not show up on YouTube. They live on the sensitive. Oh my god. Oh my god. Um, let's see. How's everything going? I think everything's going great. I think this is exactly what I hoped for. So educating people will upgrade buildings. Uh-oh, what happened? It's a ambulance. Who's getting... Arrived at the medical clinic. There's people standing around outside. Tyler Roberts. He's an uneducated teen, he's unemployed, he's not very happy at the moment. Emma Clark is an uneducated senior. She's not very happy either. Actually, we'd get more power if we put him down here. Let's do that. Done by requisite amount of damage to the overall sum of civilization could bed down our volcanic. Thanks for coming out, buddy. The cute little houses on Bean Avenue. We've definitely fleshed out this shaft. Uh, the head is gonna require some work. What's our next unlock at? Next unlock is at 1,400. Make some schools, everyone's uneducated. We have a school. I don't think it's at capacity, though. And still, it's still like two-thirds. It looks girthy. Really did flesh it out, didn't it? Really did. Alright, I think, I think the other side of the cool S is gonna end up being, uh, residences. Put a pond at the tip. Jesus Christ. Do it. I mean, once, once I have access to that, I suppose. I can make that happen. Mail order babies available. Select the best genes yourself. Free shipping, babies overnight. Don't do it, man, don't do it. Provide good services and education. Have a high land value. Zoned buildings in your city can be improved to higher level buildings. Oh, did that just happen? Oh, I think that's happening right here. What do we get? The Valley Residence. Yep, upgrade underway. We've done it, chat. We've created a nicer house. Or a fountain, yeah. Yeah, once we, once we get access to stuff like that. For sure. Alright, um, I believe we're gonna need some commerce. Just fill in this area. Just strip malls. Just strip malls as far as the eye can see. A fountain. How is our dominant not a VIP with ideas like that? Cause he chose to be a mod instead. Was it a wise decision? Who can say, really? What does traffic look like now? I have the ability to build four-lane roads, six-lane roads, six-lane roads and medians. Can't build toll roads yet. Wouldn't it make sense for mods to be VIP? I mean, they're essentially like super VIPs. They're, they're essentially, they're essentially, like, if you wanna think of it as a class structure, they're a class above VIP. Don't let, don't let that go to your heads, mods. Alright, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna see if our commerce can stand to just fill in this area. This can all just be shopping. I want the diamond that win one of our competitions, buddy boy. The next time we do a wheel, put your best game forward. Diamonds must be earned. Hmm, what are these little faces? Crime? Crime rate is high at Dino Oil. I'm sure it's fine. Should I build a fire department, I wonder? Oh, fire, fire departments are expensive. I don't know about that. Yep, that's a new service, alright. That I don't want. That I just have no interest in having. Aerial view's pretty hilarious. Pretty great, isn't it? What do you, what do you want me to do over here? Remember to have a look at what? There's nothing to build over here. Uh, this side of the road does not have water. Let me build this out, and then, I guess go in from here? It's kind of an ugly little gap in there, but I'm pretty sure it'll be fine. Yep, that's a pretty great aerial view. What is this? What is this? Crime rate is high. Actually, let's see, we have, we have policies. Do I have... Oh, power usage, water usage, smoke detector, distributing, yeah, okay, whatever. Not very exciting. The economy! These are our taxes. This is where our money goes. Expand eastward, you say? Expand eastward. We do have a pretty dense little city here right now, don't we? You know, one thing I can do. I can build these power lines a bit more... That one we'll leave for now, but I just wanted to do that. Well, until that vote goes through, we can... Let's build things out along the coast. Actually, I wanna do, yeah, I wanna do that, I wanna do... Whoa, okay, no, 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 give me, give me, give me straight road. Fair road's fine. There we go. Land of the Rising Dawn. I think we can go that way, and we can go... It's an interesting way to do things, but okay. Yeah, let's do that. That looks, that looks beautiful. That's exactly what you wanna see down by the waterfront. Congratulations, we're now a tiny town. We can landscape, we can build parks and plazas, we can build level-two unique buildings, we can ban your pets, we can ban you from spo, from smoking, we can build bigger roads, we can build canals and quays. We can build a park with trees and picnic tables and stuff and things, and the birthday plaza. And a bouncy castle. Look at all these things. Look at all these things we can do. Remember to have a look at the newly unlocked building, Police Station. Remember to go fuck yourself. Remember that I don't give a shit. Keep that in mind, why don't you? Oh, wow. Oh, that's perfect! Cause we're building out in the direction of the pump, so hey, that works. Me ban you for speaking your political views out loud. I can do whatever the fuck I want. I'm the mayor! Or rather, I can do whatever the fuck people tell me to do. Cause I'm the mayor! Alright, we're expanding eastward. We, it's, it's happening, chat. We're gonna build out this way. Under, under the watchful eye... Of, of our, of our dong ministration? Here we go. Mayor or a despot? Public libraries and new service provides entertainment. Small chance for young adults and adults to become more educated. Yeah, we'll get to that in a second. Hang on, let me, uh, have a look here. Because that's landscaping. This, this, no, okay. Leisure. What do we have here? Got parks, plazas, other parks and pro, parks, plazas, other parks and props. That's a rather interesting... Yes, I remember we have a firehouse. Now shut the fuck up. Okay, that's not quite what I was thinking, so I think what we have to do... Quite what I had in mind. I think we need... Oh, nooo. I can fix this, chat. Also, how the hell is this a small park? I don't see anything small about this park. Sorry, William Street. Nothing in the city is small. Have to chop the tip off? Alright, there we, oh, this is the happiest dong in town! Oh, that, oh, yes. Oh, yes, that's just, that's just perfect, chat. That's exactly what I hoped for. And then, can we actually accent this? No, not with that. Can we actually accent this? With a fountain? Oh, no. I thought, I thought you could add things to existing buildings, but no. Well, I think that's an improvement, personally. What are those nodes, actually? I don't know what I'm doing. Let, let's not do that, actually. I guess let's fill in the rest of this with residences. I'm sure somebody's gonna live right there on the tip. Like, no doubt. And then, I don't know if anybody wants any shops in here, but I'm gonna build them. Just in case. Exit through the gift shop. Uh, let's see. Could end up boxing in this dong. If I'm not careful. Taking a box. Alright, we need more, we need more residences. Stat. To fill in this whole area here. And this here. Just make sure you're hooked up to water. We can, we can drip some from the tip. Before expanding outward. Back upward. What an amazing piping system I have. I hate that phrase, which one? I say lots of stupid things, which one? There's an abandoned building in the city that's spoiling the view. You bulldoze it to make the people in the neighborhood happier. Let's see, somebody moved out of here because reasons. Oh, leave fruit. Uh, let's see, they wanted to tell me about libraries. This is expensive, goddamn! I guess we could do it, though. I guess we could do it. Yeah, let's put it over here. Happiness! Libraries are cool, it's true. Also, we can build a high school at some point. Goodnight, Zem. Thanks for coming out. It was, of course, a pleasure to see you. I am, of course, gonna keep building these. These quays are finished shortline allow buildings to be zoned close to the valuable waterfront. Should I quay this in, chat? Would quays be wise? What is this? Pavement path, gravel path. Maybe it's this? What is this? Way. Aaron being stuck in elementary school education probably explains the abundance of dick designs in the city. Hmm. Eh, I'm not sure I wanna mess with that just yet. Wow, nobody wants to live over here, huh? Just nobody feeling it. I don't know if it's a power thing or what, but just put a few shops over there. This area filled in quite nicely. That's a nice library, damn, look at that! Reminds me I haven't been to my local library in a while. They have 3D pri, they have 3D printer services at a library? That's awesome. Chat! I'm kind of, I'm kinda wondering about the crime situation in the city. This is Rapidow Motors. I do wonder a bit about crime. But I suppose it's fine. Oh, and our, our library ended up getting built on a bit of a hill here. I didn't even note, oh, yeah, there's- I didn't even note- oh yeah, there's, oh wow, there's actually a rather sizable hill here. It's okay, you're creating Gotham City, okay, that's fair. I'll accept this. Ummm... I feel like maybe the other side of this city deserves a park 2. Oh, this is, god, Jesus Christ, this is huge! How do you expect me to play something like this video game? Slurp too steep, damn it! Let's build a carousel down by the water, I'm sure they'll love that. There we go, that works. Right by the power lines, that's gorgeous. Children should learn how to swim in high velocity water if they want entertainment. Why isn't the local government doing anything to stop fires? Does anyone supervise the fire safety regulations at all? I mean, if you really want, like, fire stuff, I guess we could do this. I guess I should put it on the main stretch, shouldn't I? Alright, there we go. Fire services, ho! And they could just spray the criminals with their hoses or something. I'm sure that'll work out fine. Uh, let's see. Saw the lead in the air that's making it roid out, uh, making them roid out on occasion. Alright, let's build another section in here. Also, vinyang. You got water? Almost. There we go. "The people also demand more filthy, filthy industries." I think we can help with that. Just fill all that junk in. That'd be great. Business? Business, this is a, this is, this is a neat looking city. This is straight up Steve Reich? "I don't know who that is. Hi, below-nice, how you doing? We're building a city." "And it's got ass, and it's got a cool ass, and even has a flaccid dong." "This is how I'm spending my night, how are you spending yours?" "Wow, my city's almost broke." Definitely not gonna be fun YouTube. "Uh, hit a wall a few times, otherwise it looks and feels great. Rocket packs tested in controlled environments." Like I said, chat, it's coming together. It's really coming together. Uh, we're at 1,883 folks. Uh, Boomtown is at 2,400. That'll give us transport, buses. Recycling, recreational use. "Someone reported my jokes to police and I'm being charged with assault with a deadly weapon." Oh, we get, we get uh, roundabouts and clover leaves next, chat. That'll be exciting. "Pac-Man mouth open at the flaccid peener as a park." I can make this work. I can make this work. "Demand New Jersey-style jug handle-" New Jersey-style jug handles? I don't think I've heard that before. Whoa? Were, were, were you not expecting us to zoom right in on the head? I guess, I guess that would come as a shock to anybody. Do we get any new unique buildings? Look at these. "Fountain of life and death." "Unlocked with one full lifespan lived in the city." Oh, are these like achievement buildings? "10,000 squares of industrial zone built." "Have more than fifty thousand dollar, or five hundred thousand dollars. Average citizen health under 20%." "Can poor health be something to be proud of? Apparently, yes." "The Lazarette Plaza is a scenic area where people like to visit. Requirement for building the medical center." I see this city is serverly and justly planned. Alright, lemme uh, here. Let me grab this one. There we go. Well, that will definitely determine our expansion goals. What else we have here? Uh, "I'm a large child," I mean, you're at, you're basically asking us to add a, a video game character "To the giant penis we carved directly into our city." I wouldn't, even you are a large child, you're not the largest child here. "Kill three instances of cemetery," yikes. The lifespan, squares residential, public transport, garbage piling per building. Wait, what does that make? Mall of moderation, posh mall. "All tax rates at most 4%, huh." "Am I going to grab some prunes and butter pecan ice cream? They're delicious." That does sound really nice. We've been eating so much shaved ice. That shaved ice machine my wife got is wonderful. It is so nice. Um... Okay, so yeah, this, this vote is, this, okay. This vote is gonna de- uh, determine our expansion plans, but I'm not really seeing how it fails at this point, so... Fun fake shaved ice is called raspus in Spanish, interesting. Alright, let's see what we can do here. Ummm... Now we need curved roads. "Stor's gonna get you Talenti ice creams," dude, I love Talenti. Talenti is so good. So if I do like, oh, this is gonna be... Man, I am no good at making these curves work. Well, hang on, hang on, hang on, maybe... 90-degree it. And then... Almond pack? Look, I am... Not, oh, no, that's not how you wanna do it. I am not good at making things curve, okay? What do we do, like, wait, 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 we're getting there. We're getting there. No, 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 I need you like, out this way, and then, aw, man! Okay, I, I can make this work. I can make this work. My man, ah, that's not too bad. Okay. Yeah, okay. Pac, Pac-Man gonna gobble that knob. Waka waka! Alright, and we'll connect him up there. Puckman, Pac-Man's mutated cousin, and then, let's go ahead and use this area over here. And just, I don't know, let's just fucking do that. So it almost looks like it could be a sane construct, but not really? "Oh, the, oh, the dick road was extremely purposeful." "The dick road is possibly one of those purpose, purposeful things I've ever done in my life." "The dick road was an absolute necessity." Ummm... Since this is a Pac-Man's, I'm going to build a small park within the Pac-Man's. And then, let's just kinda... Let's just kinda fill in this whole area. Yeah, dick, dick road is very much a vanity project. There we go. And then, I think that's gonna need some pipe. Just do like an absolutely nonsensical pipe layout, I suppose. There we go. Let's just connect those, so... Also, how's the water going? Oh, we're, we're great, we're great on water. Water's, water's not an issue. Felatio Park? Put the park inside Pac-Man, yeah, there we- it, it kinda looks like his eye now. The way it's set up? Kinda looks like his eyeball. "Parents looking to move to the Pac-Man neighborhood. Oh, look at how happy the kids are, they love this place, there's even a park nearby." "Saw a funny city skyline video recently where someone made a city on a huge mountain hollowed out in the middle and had people sewage flowing into poop volcanoes to let it erupt." I've seen a couple of those. So, for our part, uh, we've built an entire neighborhood that spells ass. Um, our... Uh, social services, like, uh, our school and our clinic are on the cool S. We built a big, extremely shiny now, flaccid penis with a park on the end. And then, we built a Pac-Man to gobble it up. Dong neighbor nearby exists. They do exist. Now, shadows, if you or anybody else i- are interested in, in making magic like this happen, uh, we have a dragon coin thing up right now that lets you put something to a vote. All this stuff that I just showed you, the ass neighborhood, the cool ass neighborhood, the flaccid dong neighborhood, all were put to votes and passed, so... Shadows turning Pac-Man cold. Landscaping. I can build rocks. Boulder. I can build shrubs. I can build trees. I can build suburban fences, why would I wanna do that? "I wanna see the po- the poop explosion." Unfortunately, we've been very sensible with our poop. We've been pumping it out down here and it's just flowing out of the city. We knew not what we voted for. "Main district of the city is literally just one ridiculously long road where every time you need to add more to it, you have to make the road longer." I got you. I got you. That is a thing that we can do. Ummm... "Also, if you're wondering why we have such a, a, a crime problem, this is a fuck the police city." "We passed a vote early on in the stream to have no police whatsoever." I gotta say, it's working out for us. Like, crime, crime is certainly an issue, but the population continues to grow, we still have demand in these areas, so I do kinda wonder about some of these, uh, factories. I don't know what, what makes, uh, Madagascan vanilla bean hits so different but is so fucking good, I agree. I very much agree. Is it the UAE that wants to build an actual city like that? Oh, the line? Uh, that's Saudi Arabia. It's part of their whole NEOM initiative. Uh, they, they wanna build a whole bunch of stuff like that, honestly. No shortage of goofy ass ideas like that. It's crime looking, anyway. Oh, crime is fine, y'all shut up. Get, get to know your neighbors. Glution? Alright. Seems like maybe we've built all of our wind turbines in like the worst possible places, but that's fine, too. What's this? Health. People are moderately healthy. Kind of. Let's see. "Fuck the reference, this should be, say, uh, say Piranesi." "God damn it, arcane, you've ruined everything." Oh no, this place is on fire! Well, fortunately, it's happening during a rainstorm, so I mean, how bad can it be, really? Look at the little guys! Look at, look at them going and putting everything out. Good on ya. Well done. Well done, gentlemen. Well done, well done, well done indeed. We need more filthy fucking industry. Build some goofball industrial park down here. My botching of the reference brought ruin to that house. Oh my god. Oh, you know what? I don't want you there. Is Eon Busk's house, he tried to light a fire and blow off his hand and it lit his home on fire? It's either that or he tried to make Pop-Tarts. I could believe either, honestly. Okay, at this point, we can get rid of, uh, some of these, cause they're ugly. There we go, that should continue to power that. Rain sure does make things shiny in this game, is this, is this game built on Unreal? You're about to joke about the Pop-Tarts? It's hard not to after reading that absurd shit. Alright. "The eternally long road shall be built." Ummm... I'm gonna start it from here. I think what we shall do is we shall build it from here. And we're gonna make this a weird curvaceous place. Alright, so we're gonna start with a road that goes like this. And, let's see. Let's... Ah, the bodybuilder technique? Build that out a little bit, just to keep things nice and separated. Ummm... Let's fill this bit in with a, a, a touch of commerce. As a buffer. In fact, we'll give you a little extra buffer here. And the stinky stuff. And then, let's start building ourselves some residences down here. Go like that far. Oh, good, I already had a pipe in play for this. Perfect. Excellent, spectacular. Reminded me of Sonic Adventure 2 mod, I saw it try to make it HD and all it did was make everything up to it, including a fucking desert, just shiny and wet. I mean, the rain is really coming down right now, too. It is really coming down. Do we have any interesting ordinances we could, uh... No. We're actually making sixty-three dollars, sixty-eight dollars a month off of tourism. One... A little over one percent of our income comes from tourism, good for us. Eventually, citizens will see a restaurant across the street and make a reservation for a weekend. That has to be how long it takes them to drive to the end of the road to change lanes? Oh yeah, once this fills in, we're going. We're going far afield. Shit, I'll take this, I'll take this up into the hills here. Remember to look at the newly unlocked building, the high school. Oh, education? I can barely afford that, are you kidding me? Look, not when I have power. Not when I have power to provide to my peoples. Does this make a bad place a monument to chaos and evil? Pretend I recite James Earl Jones' speech to the end of Field of Dreams, except it's about dick street. Someone who lives in Texas, Lamau and Al? I mean, Fart Parlor seems like the kind of town you would find in Texas, if we're being honest here. Hmm... "Finn's Voice of Cards tonight took longer than I expected." I'm guessing it was pretty good overall? Uh, you did stick with it. Keep hearing that you would love the Voice of Cards? Alright. There we go. Let's do, let's do a little daub of commerce here in the middle. Just in case... And... residences! And we've hit Boomtown! It's booming, chat! We can recycle, we can do recreational marijuana. Our next one is at five thousand, that's when we get Busy Town. Not from Richard Scary this time. "Mayor's worked tirelessly and now the regional government has passed a bill that allows for a larger city territory." Cool. "The regional governors shall be given direct control of their districts." My buzzed. Heyo! How we doing on power? Oh, we got, oh man, we got a huge cash infusion for that, too. We got money, chat, money in the bank. Well, let's just keep building up this way, I guess. Uh, I guess we can build that high school. Actually, wait, no, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna see how this city council vote goes. Cuz depending on how that goes, we may need to, uh, alter our plans a bit. A city designed through the lens of madness. Oh shit, I actually have an idea. I actually have a really good idea. Are we getting purely alternative energy? That's what I've been doing. Uh, our energy sources have not come up in a council vote yet. Our available options are, oh, we have advanced wind turbines. Pretty damn expensive, but, uh, but yeah, the only other one we have is coal power at the moment. We'll have oil, we'll have access to oil at five thousand. Wind turbines, our power blows! You have the DLC that lets you use blimps, ask me for purchase? No, I don't have any of the DLC. I own no DLC for this game, I'm afraid. Okay, so since that resolution passed, uh, chat, what is, how do you envision a monument to chaos and villainy? Cuz I can imagine a couple ways this could go. Doom House? Activision headquarters? Monument to Chaos and Villainy, you mean like Las Vegas? Like, I'm trying to think, okay, well, you already have, we already have no police stations. Wait, what the hell is that icon? Not enough educated workers, our people are stupid. Um, we already have no, no police force of any type, so crime is absolutely rampant. You want more chaos and villainy, get as much police as you can. I choose not to interpret it that way. Personally. Um... I mean, there's a lot of things we could do, we could defund our services. Um, we could, we could build polluting industries all over the city. If you did, I would try pushing for an area where the only public transport is via blimps and call it Hayao Miyazaki's Dream City. That's cute, I like that. So yeah, chat, let's, um... I need some input on what exactly constitutes a, uh, a hive of scum and villainy for y'all. "May where the only industries are police or prison and gambling." Elon Musk Park? Yeah, okay, I can build road tolls, thank you, yeah, that's great, I don't, well, I guess road tolls would be pretty evil. Make every road a toll road? A circle of just toll roads? Wait, how the fuck does this work, anyway? We need like fifty roundabouts? So apparently, you need like... You need a bunch of space for toll roads. Make Spiral Town Edo-style? Okay, hang on, lemme pause this, cuz we need to do some demolition here. We're gonna have to destroy the only roads in and out to see if we can make room for this. Alright, two-way toll booth. So people are gonna have to pay a toll to get into or out of the city. I'm sorry, how do you want me to, like, how can I rotate this? How does, that's, how does that make any sense? Hang on, lemme do a little bit of experimentation here. Cuz it seems like maybe... Okay, lemme build that weird-ass thing. And then, lemme see if we can toll road this. It seems like you have to build them perpendicular, yeah. That's fucking weird, you have to build them perpendicular to existing roads. How do you rotate? Oh, 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 okay, okay, I think we're getting somewhere. I think we're getting somewhere, okay, that's a really weird way to handle this, but okay. Okay, I think I have an idea, actually. Maybe. Think the road toll assumes six-lane traffic? It's, uh, four-lane. Hmm, let's see here. What if, okay, here, another idea. It's gonna take me the rest of the night just to figure out how to do this. I like that one building that had happy faces, you deleted the roads. Oh, that looks terrible, I love it. Um... Nah, this doesn't seem to be expecting anything. I don't know what the hell is going on here. Um, okay, people hated living by highway so much. Okay, I know what I'm gonna do, it's gonna be gross and awful, but I'm gonna do it. Bend that. We're gonna build it out like that. Oh, that's not gonna cause any traffic concerns whatsoever. And then... Valid shape. Okay, we just gotta bend it, we gotta bend it back around. We just gotta, this'll be fine. Look at this. Oh, 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 progress! I saw progress. Yeah, boy! That's what we wanna see. Okay, no, 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 this is good, this is good, this is good. Um, I feel good about this. How do you, how the fuck do I... How are we gonna... Excellent, I've made possibly the worst intersections in the known universe. Feeling real good about this right now. It is horrifying, isn't it? Alright. But, where can I buy maps? I need to plan my route better to avoid toll booths. I feel like we accidentally made like another, another big donger out of this. Or rather, a stubby donger. I don't have access to roundabouts yet, do I? Wait a minute! Oh my god. Oh my god! Jesus Christ! It's huge, chat! Alright, alright, we'll just let this ride for now. Roundabouts and tolls at every entrance and exit, creating hell neighborhoods under the highways. Okay, uh, what were we doing? Oh, we need more housing. Did we build more housing? Oh, we were going to build more housing, I got distracted. I got severely distracted. "Work continues on the neighborhood that will never end." It just goes on and on, my friends. Appreciate some sort of unholy glyph to summon a demon. So how's this all going? This is, no, this is great, now we have a horrible, unholy traffic jam to get out of here, because there's a light here for just no reason whatsoever. Because I couldn't, if there's a way to separate off this road to connect to here and this road to connect to here, that would've been a lot better, but, yeah. Why the fuck are the cars merging into each other? Because they're going from a three-lane road? They're going from a three-lane road down to a two-lane road where they need to be in the right lane to turn into the city. Put a small shop on that corner. There we go. Perfect. Perfect, how's this go? Wow, that grew up real fast, damn. People love this shit. People are loving it. "A dead person is waiting for transport. Make sure that there are enough purses and they can reach the buildings and transport the dead back to cemeteries and crematoriums." "Death care is linked to healthcare services, take a look at his info," okay. Death care. What do we need here? Child health center. Cemetery, okay, dump him in the river? We could just put... Here, we'll put the cemetery as close to the entrance of this, wait, wait, wait! Put a crematorium next to the pizza parlor? What if we, what if we put the cemetery on the others? Put a crematorium next to the pizza parlor? What if we, what if we put the cemetery on the other side of the toll bo- What if we put the cemetery over here? So people had to pay the toll to bury their loved ones? And then, and then they have to, they have to... They would actually have to go down this avenue and then pull a U-turn at the main exit of the city to get back there? In fact, at this point, I don't even care what y'all think of doing it. And we're all so very happy that this has happened. Perfect. Yep, this is, this is perfect. They want water? Why the fuck do they want water? How did she get to be so good? City plant's a gift. Honestly, it's a gift. Oh shit, we have a business, look! It's a... It's a dino oil, or dino oil. Put a toll booth at the U-turn. If I thought I could fit another one in there, I would. But it was, it was hard enough to just cram one in there, honestly. That's what she said. Uh, let's see. I'll just continue building the filthy disgusting industries over here. Let's see, do we have access to crematoriums? Crematorium's at seventeen thousand, just so you know. So I'm not sure, we're, we're just about to crest three thousand, I'm not sure we're gonna get to that tonight. Yep, people have to pay a toll to see their loved ones. Meanwhile, this particular neighborhood's going great. Do a nice sharp turn back on itself here. Slap down a little more commerce. And I just, I love the way the music is swelling at this. I just love the way the music is like, yes, this, this is epic. Uh, we can do bus depots. Argent is just feeling inspired with the loop-de-loops. Everything is epic. What are we doing here? "No deceased have been stored here yet, even though we've got some gravestones." Can, can the hearse not get here? It says there are nine out of ten hearse's, oh, is that them? There they go, chat! Oh, there they go through the toll booth! Here we go, on, on to your final resting place, buddy. We're just gonna have a line of hearse's, too. Oh my god, and when the station has to fill up? Wait, where are you going? Wait, where, wait, where's he going? Oh my god. Wait, 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 are you telling me you can't actually U-turn here? Oh my fucking god, you can't U-turn? You have to drive all the way over here into oncoming traffic and then do a three-point road turn? Just to get back into the city? Pizza parlor, crematorium combo. Uh, okay, we have pizza parlors, don't we? Let's see, we've got Sally's yakisoba, Sally's doughnuts, wait, no, this is a drugstore, what the fuck? Convenience store, what is this? This is barbecue. That's a drugstore. Ice cream shop. We'll work it out. We'll work it out. Hearse forgot to bring dimes, so horrible. So horrible. Um, let's see. "First residents of Torres actually invested this type of game as their jam," oh, awesome, nice! Alright, I have a new idea, I have a new idea. So, the cemetery is only accessible from here, right? Alright, I think I know what's, what's gonna go out, I've got an idea for the, the tip of the A now. We're gonna build up this way. And then we're gonna build out this way, right up there. And then we build a bunch of heavy industry right around here. I mean, the people in these neighborhoods are gonna love it. Because that's gonna make it a lot easier for them to, uh, to reach their job sites. "So I need you to do this with Planet Coaster so we can suggest ideas like having a free ride that exists into a bit of the park where the only way to leave is paying for the most expensive ride ever." I mean, look, straight up, if y'all are enjoying the stream concept, we can do thi- I sneezed so hard, I met god! If y'all are enjoying the stream concept, we can do this with literally any building game out there. We can do it with Planet Coaster, we can do it with Planet Zoo, we could go back and do it with, uh, the, the Roller Coaster Tycoon games. I think Roller Coaster Tycoon might be particularly fun. Cuz I could still try to beat the scenarios with y'all just making terrible, god-awful suggestions the whole time. I feel like that could actually be a pretty fun challenge. "As soon as I'm flipping exhausted, crash for now, see you tomorrow for the power hours," sounds good! Yeah, we're gonna be doing, uh, King Arthur's World again for the power hours. Okay, there's a thing I wanna do. There's a thing that I want to do. I, I've had, I've had an idea, chat. I've had an idea. Gonna complete it? I, I want to. I, I want to, but we'll see if that's even possible. It's really gonna depend on the next couple of areas. Okay. How does this work? How do you... What is the button? How do you, how do you, how do you elevate roads? Somebody, somebody who's familiar with this game. I want, I want to make this road go over this neighborhood. How do I do that? I know you can do that. My question is how? Is that thing you have access to? I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's something you have to unlock. Hang on, I'm gonna check and see. Um... Page up and page down, okay, cool. I knew it was in there somewhere. What about that pre-built off-ramp thing? No, I, I wanna actually, like, that would connect up these roads and I, I don't wanna do that, I wanna, I wanna keep going with this horrible, horrible thing we've got going right now. There it is! That's what I'm looking for. Yes! No, I don't wanna demolish it, shit, 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 shit. Can I build it high enough that we don't have to demolish it? Hang on, 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 hang on. Uh, looks like the supports. It looks like the issues are the supports. Wait, 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 you can actually, okay. Should I... Should I do this, or should I go underground? Because I could go under these houses instead. That might work. Potentially. Maybe. Landing city's like a roller coaster? Do you have one lane over and one lane under? Nnn... Wait, could I? Go under, it'd be like constant gentle massage for everyone. Okay. Okay, so here we go. "There's a new piece of land available for purges, take a look," I'm busy, shut up, video game. Okay, seems like this is gonna work. And it's gonna be really expensive. Ha, there we go, chat! There we go! We got this bit of land and I'm using all of it. Boom, there we go, okay, cool. Oh, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a huge pain in the ass to try and bend back around from. Oh, but we can do it! I'm just, I'm just gonna go ahead and do this. So I can figure this out. How much money do we have? Plenty. There we go. Looking good, chat, looking good! I'm feeling good! Let's see, uh, let's make... I know, I'll make the ones right before and right after the overpass. Commerce. That way people can stop and go to the bathroom before they drive over this horrible little bridge. There we are. I love living in Uzumaki residential neighborhood. Actually, you know what? The, the idea of building a spiral town actually sounds really cool to me. Like, if we did another Night of Cities Skylines, I think I would genuinely wanna do that. Like, straight up just try to build that horrible village from Uzumaki? Oh my god, people are moving in! It works, chat, the system works! When do we get access to the minotaur to put in the labyrinth? Meanwhile... Alright, well, um, traffic does not seem to have improved. On the bright side, very, oh, no. The people, the people leaving traffic is over here. "Saw someone do a Cities Skyline playthrough where the map was like a caton board with hexes connected by one road across from each other," oh, that's cool, that's really cool. Yeah, you could do all kinds of neat themed stuff like that, couldn't you? I like that. Alright, let's fill in the rest of the heavy industry next to grandma's final resting place. My god, actually, I fill this in too. You know the DLC for it, I would've suggested building a giant casino next to the cemetery? Well, I will say, now that, now that I know y'all enjoy Cities Skylines, might be worth picking up, uh, the DLC. To make even more cursed cities in the future. I think the next leg of this might need to be industry. Cuz there is industrial demand and we have industrial zones, but they're way over here. So maybe I'll just interrupt a bunch of this with a whole bunch of stinking ass industry. Industry in the shape of a smiley face. Okay. Okay, let's see here. "Insomnia sucks ass, suffer with me." Alright, uh, let's start here. Oh no, 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 I see what I need to do, okay, I see what I need to do. "Off the bed, thanks for ruining this town," my pleasure! It's what I do, buddy. Some Children of the Corn shit. There we go, okay. Um... Do those youngos have boobies? Oh no. Oh, okay, I think I see what I need to do here. Not quite like that. Alright. Happy Fun Industries! Only there was a way to connect these somehow. "I'm sure a smiley emoji can counteract, uh, the evil of the entryway chaos zone." I guess, I guess we'll just leave it as such, and then, uh, yeah, just the filthiest industry we can build. All the way around. What's up, Chaos? You know what? I'll zone these as industry too, cause why the hell not? Let's just make it as horrible and unpromising as possible. And let's zone these for more residences. Uh, and then, let's wire this up for water, I guess? I'm sure that's fine. Now let's see what we got! Hello, Chaos, my old friend. Happy faces? It's true, happy faces are supposed to be yellow. So this is what we got, chat. Hon- honestly, the ass, the ass district and the cool ass, they seem to be doing great. The flaccid dong, the Pac-Man. Also doing great. How long before we have cars going back and forth on those little disconnected roads? That's a good question. I genu- so they're apparently called Heather Street and Green Street. And then, the mouth is Robert Street. I am genuinely curious if anything's gonna build up here and then complain about not being connected to anything else. Don't forget, you're here forever. The hell is this place? This is cool looking. The Elk Residence. They don't seem very happy about their lot in life. What's this going up behind you, buddy? Oh, maybe that's why they're upset! Maybe that's why they're displeased. They live behind Garments Limited. They live behind Triangle Shirtwaist. Aw, that's cool, look, there's a little sandbox out here behind this house. It's fine, the area's nice and crunchy. This is also where all the poop water goes. So I'm sure when the wind changes direction, the smell is just fucking incredible. Incentivizes the workers to work longer hours since they otherwise have to walk home on foot. No one wants to live right next to the Play-Doh Fun Factory. All that fun will keep you up at night. Oh, hang on, before, before it builds up, we need a, we need an egress from this hell. Uh, and I'm gonna put it... Right here. It's like he has a tentacle now. Yeah, I guess these can be industry too, why not? Dude just looks like a road spur. Oh my god, they really did build... Dude, they built Frank's Fishstick Factory on a road that doesn't connect to fucking anything. And then they're gonna do it again. Well, good luck, champ. I'm sure this'll go swimmingly for you. Apparently they're operating normally? It says they're operating normally. They have sixteen jobs available though. I'll be very interested to see if they fill them. Goods unlimited. Nah, I think your prospects are pretty limited, honestly. Freaking libertarian businesses don't want to build their own roads. Actually, I wonder something. Now, now I'm curious about something. Um, don't we have some like... I could put down like gravel. I could connect this stuff with gravel. It might look a little weird, but not as weird as like proper roads. How long before the IMF comes a knock and offering this? We're actually a very profitable city. Build one house next to the eyes so that they're in mini ecosystem? That's a great idea, honestly. That's actually a great idea. Um... Actually, I'm gonna need to rezone part of this. Oh wait, I actually, I accidentally just unzoned them. Hang on, I need to be a bit more cautious. Here. That's okay, you can stay industry, it's fine. Right here. You be that. And then whatever, whatever pops up on this side... Will unzone around it. Does this work? Does this actually work? Also, don't ever let anybody tell you you can't build a city without a police station. I mean, people are pissed about it, but not that pissed. The city still works. I'm gonna speed this up. Oh my god, they're building a house! Oh my god, they really are building a house. Oh my god, I can't believe it. The Chestnut Restaurant, uh, Residence. Also, you know what? In terms of... Oh, no. Terms of power. There we go, and now I can get rid of all this other crap. All these ugly high tension lines. There we go, much better. Where are the black icons? Black icons are abandoned. So the quiet corner shop here has been abandoned. Oh wow, and they actually like model it as abandoned. That's pretty interesting. We don't need no fucking police. We don't need no fucking police. Do not apologize for your harsh tone. It is deserved. What the hell is this? Citizens are sick. Well, I can't imagine what would be making the people in this house sick. I mean, this looks fine to me, right, chat? It's weird. I'm sure they'll get over it. Yep, not seeing any problem here. I recognize. No issues whatsoever. Is that a Sriracha factory? Is this a Sriracha factory? Goods unlimited. It's a bu- this is a box factory, as it turns out. This is a ice cube factory. This... Huh. Okay, this water tower is apparently a box factory. Uh, this is ready-to-wear LTD. Ice cube factory. Garments limited. So it seems like they only have a, a limited number of generic names to go around for these. You can rename them whatever you want. So all of these throbbing icons. Um, the, the... This is, crime rate is high. Uh, this is, crime rate is very high. And then, this is, it's abandoned. You remember that from a few years ago when Sriracha was apparently ma- oh yeah, making their neighbors really sick? Something, something in the... Oh no! Oh no, our crime-ridden carousel. Tragic. Who's this building? This building is cool. Oh shit, it's a... That's a pharmacy? Like, seriously? Burned bean coffee flaming ring. Big bite, big bite. Ms., uh, Ms. Read the Box is saying colossal, C-I-M is colossal. That's, that's for this district, okay? We, we have that earmarked, or maybe something else marked. I dug up a barrel full of hashtag glowing hashtag goo in my background, uh, back, backyard, background? Who should I call? Ghostbusters. Kind of sympathize with the factory in that case, since the Sriracha factory had been there before the neighborhood was built around it. Yes. I always, I always sympathize with whoever was there first. Did you know? Did you know that near Knott's Berry Farm? Um... There are... Like, the, the neighborhoods in the area expanded uh, up, like, right up to, next to Knott's Berry Farm? And there's apparently a family that moved in there like ten or fifteen years ago that just constantly complains about the noise from Knott's Berry Farm? Despite the fact that they bought a house next to Knott's Berry Farm? I only found that, found out about that recently, and I hate, I hate those people, whoever they are. I hope they're miserable every night of the week. People are entitled assholes. Man. If anything, that's an understatement. Something similar to the French Quarter and random rich doctors and lawyers who move in there and complain about the noise and the vomit? Yeah. That's like, that's like the very essence of, like, the, the... Like aggressive gentrification, right? This area seems really cool, it has a lot of character. I'm gonna move here and then complain about everything that gives its, its character. Some people love just being righteously angry about nothing. I think, I think it's more people just wanting, wanting to exert power over their surroundings. I think, I think it's big time wanting their cake and eating it too. Knott's Berry Farm is a theme park with the peanuts characters. Yes, yes it is. Move in next to a bar that has hosted live music for decades and then complain about the noise. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Terms of weird housing stories where I live, the city forced some dude to the long-ass driveway to name it as his street, so now his driveway has a sign, "A dog will lick his butt but won't eat a pickle str-" Ah! Well, that's fairly inspired. Can't, can't be mad about that. Wow, I haven't zoomed out all this way. This is a really fucked up city, chat. This is an incredibly fucked up city. Also, because of this little expansion I, I made, it almost looked like saying lass instead of ass? I've been so focused on this, like, absolutely chaotic hell section of the city that I, I didn't pay any attention to that. In fact... There we go. Ready for expansion. I'd like to know the city does not officially recognize the street name, but people here just know it as that anyways. Of course. Can't believe our monument to chaos and villainy has attracted crime. I can't wait for some people to move in like right fucking next to this. This is great. Where are these little signs here? Information? Why is your information up here? You may never pass through the small gap in the middle, like a small... Shut up. It won't... Oh my god, look! There's, there's a street lamp projecting out! That's awesome, I love it. I wish you could build houses along, along bridges. That would be really, really cool. I do, I, I do know, chat, that there is a DLC for this game that lets you build, uh, carless cities. Pedestrians and public transportation only. The HOA where he lives is trying to force him to do that, so he named it, uh, that to fuck with him. It's great. Absolutely great. Hmm... Demand seems to be flattening out. I feel like I need to do something. Let's build... Let's see here. Well, we need a new elementary school. I've got an idea, chat. Let's build a new elementary school out here. Out... Here somewhere. Yeah, let's build it over here. We'll build a new elementary school over here. And then, let's build, let's build the new high school. Oh, good Christ. It's huge. Yeah, we'll build the new, the new high school over here. There we go. In a hole. That's great, just put it, put it, put it in a hole. Why not, let, let's give people one more... Let's do, let's do a child health center. Let's, let's, but just for the people over here. There we go. Alright. Information to the people who live beneath here hate this! Oh, and I guess we need more power, huh? Ain't that the way? There we go. Well, hopefully that helps to spike, uh, demand in our particular neck of the woods. Go ahead and fill in all this. Are you able to rename the city? Uh, I'm not sure. Yes, I can still rename the city. I'm not using any of the advanced wind turbines now. I probably should. I should probably start up, cause I think you can just upgrade these? Oh, maybe not. Breeding the city dead. Alright, it's gotta be voted on, but... Oh, and apparently that's not enough water for here. There. Get water, nerd. There we go. What the hell? Multiple pro- so people do actually live here? And people work? How the fuck does this even... What? How is this possible? I wonder what the skull means. A person's passed away is wa- oh, a person's passed away is waiting for transport. Alright, that's kinda fucked. That's kinda fucked. Oh yeah, how's our one medical clinic doing? Oh, they're doing fine. They're doing great. Everything's great. We're in, we're in real good shape here, chat. Everything's going great. I'm gonna speed this up. I want, I want to see things expand. There's a new piece of land for purchase! Where? Oh, oh, so you can actually expand your city even further? If you wanna just fuck up other parts of the world too. Neat. There we go. What is this? The Ivy Residence. How nice. So there's six hundred and tw- oh my god, there are six hundred and twenty-three students commuting to this high school. Holy sacred mother of god. Expand out to, is that a lake? Is that a lake? Oh, over here? It looks like, yeah, it looks like there's a lake over in this direction. You have to expand out off this bluff. Oh, there's one up there too, as well. Well, the ass and the smiley face really show up well on this. Not to the lake, that's where poop goes. Yeah, you can see how it's colored the, uh... You can see how it's colored the water. Perfect. Excellent. Wonderful. This is looking spectacular, chat. Nice poop coloration. More, it sounds like more reason to build out to the lake. So the, oh my god, these houses are full of dead people and nobody can get to them. Multiple problems, yeah. Also the trash can. Also, how's our trash situation anyway? Our landfill is seventy-eight percent full. Some other stuff we could build with this in mind? No, that's toll stuff. Bus depot. Bus depot's thirty thousand. I could build a Magica theme park. The initiative passes. Alright. Our highly successful city shall now be known as X. There you go. These houses are full of dead people is the name of this. Can I shove a theme park? Ah, shit. Slope too steep. Man, they make it so hard to just slap a fucking theme park down just wherever. Can you build, no, you can't build stuff underground in this unfortunately. That would be really, really funny. What the hell is that? Multi-story decorative parking lot. A parking building that citizens will visit and enjoy parking their car in. I'm sorry, this is, this is a parking lot that improves happiness in its vicinity? Like, really? Build a park on the other side of the lake? LA needs more decorative parking lots. What if, oh shit, they just built that in too. Fuck. I was gonna, I was gonna do a thing. Wait! Uh, mm, mm, mm... It's come with hot dog carts or something? We could do... I've got an idea. We, we could build, we could build a theme park in the industrial district. I could like build it, like, off this road, so you have to drive through the factory sprawl to get to it. Do we like that idea, chat? Guessing you can't build it over the r- I, I mean, I can actually. Uh-oh, a building is burned down. Uh-oh, a building is burned down. Uh-oh, a building is burned down. Ew. Actually, it, more looks like the building shit itself, but... Alright, let me see. Uh, let me find, let me find a good spot. Alright, well this place, this house... The Cooper Residence is like a little hovel. Terrible little shack. Okay. Um, yeah, let's build out a road from here. I'm sorry, how, how exactly do you envision this going? There we go. Good try to leave again. Goodnight, man. Good luck. Alright, so we have a road over here. And then... Slope too steeeeeeep. Slope too steeeeeeep. Damn. Alright, well, let's see here. Can I, can we like... Level terrain. I wanna, I wanna like level this out. Oh my god, what the fuck? Why, why? Why did you just tunnel down to the center of the earth? Click with secondary mouse button to choose... oh. So is it like... Oh, okay. Okay. So no, this is good, I think. I think maybe we can build the amusement park next to, uh... Next to a giant horrifying hole in the ground. Maybe space already occupied. What the hell are you talking about? Hang on, I'm gonna build like this way. Sinkhole theme park? Working on it. I'm trying to make this work. The damn slope is too steep. Okay. You're gonna be... okay. I think I can do this. I think I can do this. We just gotta level everything out to like this... Come on, man. Meet me halfway here. Okay, okay, okay. Alright. There's a weird smell coming from the apartment next door. What does a dead person smell like? Okay. I'm gonna level everything out to like this. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna make a big flat area for this theme park. Determined to make this work. Alright, I spent like three thousand dollars leveling this terrain, okay? Okay. Now, stupid fucking theme park should fit like right here. So... If I build a road out like... If I build a road out like, you know, let's just do a straight one. Make sure we don't fuck this up. Build a road out like this. Okay. A theme park should fit there, right? Slope too s- okay. That's okay, that's okay. I can, I can still do this. I can still do this. This is fine, this is fine, everything is fine. I just gotta landscape this a little bit more, maybe really just really square the edges out. Keep this going. Really just kinda manicure this all up. I dug a barrel full of glowing goo in my backyard. It, I mean, hey, look on the bright side, free goo. Yay! Finally, chat, we did it! We did it! It exists! There it is! There we go, multiple problems! Alright, well, we gotta run some pipe out here, which should be fine, right? It's not gonna be an issue, right? Here, you get your own, you get your own water main. It's gonna be perfect. Um... And you know what? Fuck it. I'll even, I'll even give you your own power plant. How about that? Right across the street. There you go. There it is. There it is, chat. We've done it. Where are the pits? It's like, it's over here. Um, let's see here. How did that happen originally? That was so weird. Uh, let's see. I can't, like, I can't make it do that, like, crazy-ass pit again. Well, I mean, that's a pit, right? There we go, there, there's a pit. Okay, okay. No worries, no worries. We got, we got some pits for me. Kinda hard on that terrain, but... There we go. See, now everybody's happy. Also, my earbud's died. Fun for the whole family. How many visitors do we have? None. Cool, okay. I'm sure people are gonna wanna make the journey out here, right? I mean, honestly, that's a really fucking cool approach to a theme park. Like, that's really genuinely kinda neat. I mean, it's past the sewage pump, but, you know. Anyway, how's the rest of the city doing? We good? Everything, everything good? Love that it comes with red lighting too. Yeah, that's pretty cool looking. That's... And ads for yakisoba. And some kind of shitty energy drink. I mean, it looks like a cool place. And I love that it's Magica themed. Magic is a really fun game. You ever play the second one? I only ever played the first one. Got me to think of it. Anyway, chat, I do believe that is where our adventures are going to end tonight. We made a city, and by, by your hand, with your suggestions, it just turned into a great big shithole. We made really, really a pretty terrible city, but we did it together, and I'm happy about that. I'm, I'm glad it worked out this way, so... Um, I take it you all enjoyed this particular stream concept? I, I, I take it you had a good time watching stuff get built and then finding ways to pretty much just ruin everything? Cause I certainly did. I do, I do greatly enjoy building streams. So... Anyway, a couple reminders. Tomorrow night is the Power Hours. Hello, the city was the coolest. The coolest? I was pretty proud of the coolest, honestly. Um... Tomorrow night is the Power Hour special. We'll be doing more King Arthur's World. On Friday, we're gonna do our GBA night. I'm gonna play the games that y'all requested for that. Uh, on Saturday, more Power Hours. Don't know if we'll be back to the magazine proper, if we'll still be playing King Arthur's World at that point. Depends on how much it pisses me off tomorrow night. And y'all have until the end of Saturday night's stream to vote on what you wanna see next week. Whatever it is y'all vote in is getting started on Monday, so that should be pretty exciting, cause we have a lot of exciting options. Reports of trouble at the Black Mesa Research Facility. Smell the ashes. Hashtag Freeman. That's interesting. Thanks for the civil horrors. Thanks, thanks for contributing to them. Thanks for inspiring me to just make one of the most horrible crime-ridden cities I've ever seen in my life. It was a good time. Anyway, let's save this as, uh, X. Great. That's done. Black Mesa's canon in this game? I mean, with all the horrible bizarre thing that, that, things that happened tonight, would you be surprised? But yeah. Yeah, chat. Alright, come on. There we are. Alright, we're outta here. Let me go find somebody to raid. Let's go see who's up, chat. Let's go see who's doing the... Looks like it'll be Bassi tonight. Bassi's playing Pikmin 4, which I've heard good things about. Would you believe, chat, that I've never actually played a Pikmin game? Have we talked about that before? Have I mentioned that I, I just kind of missed the entire Pikmin series? Maybe that's something we'll rectify some. Who knows? We got a lot of stuff to do, chat. All kinds of stuff. Anyway, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Uh, thank you for testing out the, the city council stream concept with me. I had a really good time tonight. I hope y'all did too. Uh, and hopefully I will see you all tomorrow night for more King Arthur's World and tons and tons of little guys going bleh, 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 all over the place. It'll be great. Uh, until then, as always, y'all take care. Bye, everybody.